Worldwide to help the COVID belief effort. In California One, that's the area that we're in, that California is in, it is Nevada and Washington. They've donated eight hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, California Area One. And then for MB4 California, which our district is one of the fifteen districts, they have donated fifty-two thousand dollars, and this is all just to COVID Relief Fund. And they have also been sending out some emergency grants for the weather-related problems and the fires. And with all the money that is going out, money needs to come back in because they are still making donations around the world for disasters, including tornadoes and hurricanes. But September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. They're still doing donations for childhood cancer and towards efforts with environment projects for different Lions Clubs. So they really, really need our help. It's very easy to make a donation. And I realize as much as anybody that so many organizations want our money. There's no question. We have the California Lions, we have City of Hope. We have many, many worthwhile organizations that want our money. And it's hard to determine who gets what. And we also have personal donations, I'm sure, to our churches. So this is just for you to take a couple of minutes and think about if your club or if you personally can make a donation to LCIF. And of course, the easiest way for a club to make a donation is to do a thousand-dollar donation in a club member's name so they can be awarded the Melvin Jones Fellow. And that shows them how wonderful club thinks of their members and how much they appreciate their hard work. There are actually quite a few clubs that have donations already made to LCIF that is not attached to anyone's name. They're called unnamed donations. And I'm going to be sending out emails to club presidents and/or secretaries reminding them how many funds they have sitting at LCIF that's not attached to anyone's name. So there are some clubs that are going to be able to award these Melvin Jones Fellows and not have to make an additional donation. Doesn't mean you can't make an additional donation. One of the easiest ways to personally make a donation is to do it by credit card or debit card. There is a past International Director who many of us met, and that's Director Sam Lindsay from Texas. He was one of our guests at one of our conventions. When he first started getting involved with LCIF, he decided to donate ten dollars a month. And he had us take it on his debit card, and he forgot all about it. And for years, he just did ten thousand, excuse me, ten thousand, ten dollars a month would come out of his bank. It has grown, of course, over the years with some of his friends bearing him to increase it if they increase it. But the whole idea is that it can be done monthly. I've decided personally to become a mid-level donor to Campaign 100, and that's a three-thousand-dollar donation, and it's payable over five years. So I'm having a fifty-dollar payment debited from my bank account every month to LCIF. It's very easy, and they appreciate any kind of donation. It doesn't even have to be that much, but they need some of these funds coming in. And again, another way for a club to make their donations is to become 100% participation club. It has to be done each year. If you did it last year, it has to be done again this year. And that's having the club make a fifty-dollar per-member donation to LCIF. So if your club has twenty members, you would be donating a thousand dollars, fifty dollars per member. And that's done every year. And if you add members during the course of the Lion year, you have to send the fifty dollars in for them. And then you can be recognized at a future MB4 convention for your 100% participation. But if you are committing your funds in your treasury to a number of organizations and a number of projects, and you're feeling stretched thin, there are different ways of looking to spend your money. If you can be 100% club, that's wonderful. If you can award Melvin Joneses, that's wonderful. If you can do it on your own, just personal donations, you can go online or pick up the phone and call CI- LCIF, and you can make a ten-dollar donation every month. You can make a hundred-dollar donation every month. It's whatever is easy for you. Somehow, somewhere, the funds that they are sending out around the world have to be replenished. Now, if you would like more detailed information from me to help you or your club make these donations, all you need to do is to email me and send me your Zoom link, and I'll be happy to join your Zoom meeting. If you happen to be one of the few clubs that is meeting in person, you can let me know, and if I can make it, and we have protocol set up, we can do that, and I'd be happy to come out and take care of that. Just take a minute. I had an idea. We've all been at home for the most part, and we're still participating in Lions. But you know, we normally are going to crab feeds, spaghetti dinners. We're going to all the different clubs in District Four, and we're writing a thirty-dollar check for dinner here or a twenty-dollar check for lunch here or a wine tasting. Why not think about what you haven't spent this year on all these activities that we normally do? And give it a little thought and maybe say, gosh, you know, I can write a fifty-dollar check to LCIF. I can write a twenty-five-dollar check to LCIF. What wonderful way to show your support, even though you've been stuck at home, watching TV, cleaning house. I think it would be a wonderful idea, even if we got together a small amount of funds that haven't been spent on the activities that we normally do spend them on. And again, just let me know if you need some help. Campaign 100 is going to be continuing for another two years. They extended it because of the pandemic. And there's all different levels of participation. We have four model clubs in our district. We're hoping to get others. I'm going to be contacting some people if they join me in becoming a mid-level donor. Again, it's easy to do. So I'm going to turn it back over to Linda, because I think we have some other LCIF information related that she's going to take from here. Appreciate you letting me just go over it and review it for you all. Thank you.
Thanks. Before we go on, I just wanted to recognize that we have present in our midst Roger Powell, who is the MD4 LCIF Chair. Did I say that right, Roger? Say hello. Where are you? I think he's here.
Unmute yourself, Roger. Unmute yourself.
Maybe, maybe he popped in and he popped out.
There we are. Yes, hello. Yes, that was correct. Go ahead. Yeah.
Let's see. I can't see you.
He just unmuted himself.
I'm in room 28.
There you are. Okay, good. Good to see you.
Giving is good, right, Roger?
You know, you bet it is. Or the merrier.
Giving is good.
Lion Sue, could you explain a little bit about what LCIF has done locally for MB4?
Well, in the last year, year or two years, I should say, they did give us a hundred-thousand-dollar grant towards the all-inclusive playground in Apitos that is now open for kids with special needs, so they can go and enjoy the playground. And did the grant come through for the Sunnyvale Community Center?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay, I know that's in the works for that. And even the last fire, we had the Sabrato area. I know that they gave us an emergency grant, and with so much going on in this district, they will be approached, and hopefully we'll be getting a response on that. And of course, we have to thank the California Foundation as well for their support.
Right. Yes, we'll be looking towards probably the recovery of the devastation. It is north of Santa Cruz, so we'll just hold off on that for a little bit. Is Thelma Batilo here? Thelma?
She just, she just got off of a con call with the Youth Exchange, and she will be signing on in just a moment.
Hello.
There you are.
I've been here.
Oh, you've been here. Okay, good.
Yep.
Thelma, so you had something that you wanted to add to this short program about...
Yes. If BDG Allen has the video, I don't have the access, or do you have a... You can play the video message from international, oh, past International President.
Yes, I do have the video, but we have elected to show it towards the end of the presentation. So we'll show that towards the end, Thelma.
Okay, well, okay, so what about the two pages? Is it time to do that then?
I don't have those pages. I just have the video from Mutron. But we'll move forward. There was a question that came up in the chat.
They don't want to do it.
What is quickly the difference between the LCIF and the California Lions Foundation?
Who are you asking?
That was a question that came up in the chat.
Did you do the freaking share content?
Counsel Chair Bob Stewart can probably address that best.
So hello, everyone. Let me first say that the two foundations are complementary. That's their intention. And Lions Clubs International Foundation has various focus areas, and the California Lions Foundation has one central focus. And that central focus is to provide grant monies to California Lions Clubs where the monies are spent in California to meet the service needs of the Lions Clubs who request the funds. The maximum grant amount is five thousand dollars. And the minimum grant amount for LCIF would be ten thousand dollars. And that's, that's in a nutshell, the difference.
Right. And we did get a five-thousand-dollar grant from CLF, and we made good use of it. So thank you very much, Bob, for that. Anything else? Any other questions about LCIF or...
There's another question in the chat from Zone Chair Stan. How is Cal Lions Foundation funded?
So California Lions Foundation is funded by donations primarily from individuals within California who are Lions. And you can go on the California Lions Foundation website and read more about it.
One thing about California Lions Foundation, and we weren't going to, we were just focusing on LCIF, but just so you know, Bob can tell us more about that, is the designated funds. If your, if your club or your district has a project and you need to have a 501(c)(3) designation, and you're not a 501(c)(3), but you have a donor that, you know, or donors that want to donate to that, you know, and tax deductible, you can apply to CLF for that designation and funnel the funds to them, and then they will designate it for your project. Bob, and did I say that right?
Beautifully, and I forgot to mention that. That's, that's another value add to California Lions Foundation. If your club doesn't have a 501(c)(3) and someone wants to donate to your club, you can pass it through the foundation, California Lions Foundation, and it will just circle back but with the tax deduction because they gave to CLF.
Very good. Okay. Thelma, are we doing the presentation, or shall we move on to, let's see?
I do have it. She just, or Chris just emailed me the fresh copy of that. I can't present that right now. Is that what you want, Thelma?
Yes, please.
You see that document?
Yep, see it.
Okay. It's up, Thelma.
During the last cabinet, the installation timeframe, we had missed acknowledging that...
You muted yourself, Thelma.
Oh, sorry. It was 2:00 PM JF, as of June 16 to 2020. And that's only about that page, and that's all right. Everybody else was acknowledged by our by District Coordinator Sue Sitch. The second page is a special award that was given to our district. 2018-19, we received the District Excellence Award. I was the district governor at the time, and the Yellow Stripe Medal is for me. And congratulations to the district. And they requested that I give five awards to those people that especially helped us achieve excellence during that year. And, and I wanted to give this award, thank you for your support, on behalf of the district. First Vice District Governor at the time, Rick Silveira, gets a Blue Medal. It will say there District Excellence 2018-2019. The second medal is for, at that time, second BDG, Linda Pullessi. Now District Governor, right?
Oh, thank you.
And the third medal is for Cabinet Secretary at the time, Christopher Heine. The fourth medal is for Emerging Lion, Mangal Talang. And the fifth medal, posthumously, I'm awarding to Lion Bud Westcott. He was the chairperson for the Lions building. What do you call that? I forgot the name.
The Building for the Blind.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm being emotional about, about it. And the, and during the time, not sure if there's a page three in here, but the patch, the patch that's attached to this one, the patch is for Club Excellence during that year is being awarded to Mel Peters Executive Lions Club. So the patch goes to their banner. And the president at the time is Nellie Kabuslay. She gets the pin at the bottom. And, and that's about that. The, the main thing about this award is on page three, it would have shown what were the criteria for this award. And again, you know, thank you very much for, for the district's support during that time. We wouldn't have achieved this award, District Excellence, if not for all of you who supported the district. Thank you so much.
District Governor Thelma, I was council chair at the time. I saw the 4C6 Award to District Governor Thelma in Milan at the International Conference. Nothing could have made me more proud, and congratulations to you and congratulations to the entire sub-district of 4C6. You were one of, I believe, five sub-districts in all of Area One. So hundreds and hundreds of, of sub-districts, and five were selected, and District Governor at the time, Thelma, was one of the winners. And again, she made us all proud, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Thelma. Thank you so much for the award. That's very, very touching. So next, we want to keep this moving on is just past GSTC Bob. Do you have a report, or do you want to talk about the many service projects we've been doing lately? You could take an hour on that, I think.
Yeah, but I was told I have four minutes, so I'll be very quick. I want to have everyone look at the invite to this this meeting, and if you scroll down, you'll see a couple of the events coming up. And one of them is on September 12th. It's a concert. It's an online concert. The monies go to Vista Center. And in particular, the monies go to hardware and software for children who are blind and visually impaired, who are now having to learn at home, and they need the text-to-speech equipment in order to continue their public education services. So we want to help out with that. Vista Center does the teacher of the visually impaired services for the school districts, not just in the Bay Area, but now throughout California and beyond, they're serving this need. Secondly, Jacob's Heart, it's the only children's cancer center in our four-county district. And there's a project that's underway where they came to the Lions, and we said yes, and we've been doing a lot of painting. Several clubs and several Lions have led that effort. If you have any questions, if you want to participate, I encourage you either to go to Lion Robert Caballero or to our Region Chair, Richard Conrad. The location is Watsonville. The building is 5,000 square feet that they're essentially renovating to expand their services. We have a Bay Area furniture bank where they're taking furniture and they're improving it. In some cases, they're assembling it and then returning it back to the community for those in need. I believe Region Chair George Clark is the single point on that. If you want to serve there, there's plenty of opportunity, ongoing opportunity for club or individual lion service there. Finally, I want to talk a little bit about the wildfire relief. We received a five-thousand-dollar California Lions Foundation grant. We received other donations from several clubs, including Obadens Super, including Sunnyvale Host, including Santa Cruz Host. The small but mighty Club of Hollister Lions Club came over the hill and dropped off detergent. And what we're doing is we're providing the laundry services for the hundreds and hundreds of families of evacuees. And, and there was a lice outbreak, and so they really needed to wash their clothes, and we got there just in time. We have one location in Watsonville where, at the fairgrounds, where there's a local laundromat, and they've discounted their service, and we're just picking up the tab for the rest of it. And the evacuees get a business card saying where there's a need. There's a lion. That's their token to get into the laundromat. Governor Brown, or excuse me, Governor Brown, I'm dating myself. Governor Newsom visited, and he got his own lion's business card from that. We also brought up a portable trailer from Southern California, and it was installed at the SoCal Campgrounds on San Jose SoCal Road. And it's serving over 500 families there. It's also serving, we're also serving firefighters who are hanging out when they're not fighting the fires. And they're coming into the campgrounds with their clothes filled with oily poison oak suited all over their clothes, and they need to get their clothes washed before they go out the next day and before they get poison oak and so on. And so the van has six washers, six dryers. That's the van, that's the trailer that now has our lion signage on it, and it'll be there for two weeks, and you all helped make a difference here. And we Lions are getting a lot of recognition. I understand there's going to be a Santa Cruz County Supervisor acknowledgement of our formal public acknowledgement of our service. So thank you, everyone.
Wow, that's amazing. I, you know, it was so gratifying for us to go visit the two evacuation centers and see what, how grateful they were for our donation of the, the trailer and the cards for them to go to the laundromat. Just amazing. Thank you so much.
If anybody has a question, please raise your hand or ask the question in the chat. This is supposed to be a town hall meeting, and we want to hear from our Lions from the clubs.
Mary Chris, maybe you want to, I see you had a note in the chat.
Oh, yeah. Okay. We had a drive. We had, we had a fire victims' drive on August 26 to 28, and we got all the, the things that they needed over at the Santa Cruz Fairgrounds. And it was already, it was donated over to the, over there last Saturday. And we also got donations around a thousand dollars for the California Lions Foundation.
Very good.
Yeah, and we also, also donated to the district.
Very good.
I hope you got the, the check from, it was just mailed, I think, this week.
Oh, well, thank you.
Yes, we received your check, Mary Chris. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I think we're, we're almost on schedule. We're going to go next to Janine GLTC, Global Leadership Team Coordinator. Hard to say those words.
I know. It is hard. Hey, I just wanted very briefly to say thank you to the 30 people that showed up for our Welcome to Lions session that we had recently. We'll be having more of these introductions to the, to the Lions and all of our programs for upcoming new Lions. And it's always a nice refresher to see Lions who've been with us for some time. They can always add a lot of color and stories to the event. We have two more classes coming up next Saturday. That's Saturday, the 5th, we will be having Presidents Training and Secretaries Training. And both of those will be two-part sessions. The first part will be going over the responsibilities and some tips and techniques on, on how to be your best in that position. And the second part will be either LCIF or My Lion or both on how you can use those tools. on how you can use those tools to generate reports or file reports, put in your service hours, things along that line. So we welcome everybody in the district, not necessarily folks who are Presidents and Secretaries. I especially recommend that perhaps if you are a Vice President, that you also attend so that you can help your current president this year. So I hope we'll we'll be sending out links. There's, we've already sent it out in the constant comment, but we'll send one out probably on Friday night. So it's at the top of your mailbox. And I hope to see you all there.
Great. All right, right on time. I gotta ask, there we go. Okay, so we're going to go to G, Global Membership Team Coordinator, Liz Crook. And now it's your turn. Everybody, it's your turn to to talk and ask questions. Liz, are you here?
I'm here. And I do see that we have a question from Lion Grace from Wings of Light. And she asked if, when you're donating to Lions Clubs International Foundation, can you donate to a certain country? And Sue, could you answer that for us?
Sure, Liz. Right now, all the donations that are made to LCIF go into a fund. If it doesn't go to disaster relief, then it goes to the area of greatest need, which is determined by the Board of LCIF. You cannot specifically donate it to a country that I know of. Artur, am I good on that? You cannot donate it to a specific?
It depends on the project that you want. Is there a specific project in a specific country? Is that what she's asking? I don't know.
I don't know. I know that when Australia had those horrible fires, I think some of the monies were able to be donated directly there.
You can donate to the LCIF disaster and in the memo line, you could, Australia Fire, stuff like that.
Yeah.
So, hi, this is Grace. The reason why I was asking, I have certain family members and, you know, past coworkers who have really interest in certain countries. And they may be interested in donating if they knew their monies would go directly to that particular country.
It depends on the situation of the country and the issue that's there.
It would probably have to be a case-by-case consideration.
That's true.
Okay, thanks, you guys, very much. Nora did ask what time is the training. And just so everybody knows, 9:00 AM for President and 10:00 AM for Secretary. But everybody just needs to be there shortly before 9:00. That's what I'm thinking. So so you can take advantage of everything. So we really do have just about a great representation of leadership in the district on this call. So if you have a question for the governor, for your membership chair, your leadership chair, your service chair, your Cabinet Secretary, your Cabinet Treasurer, they're all here. So this will be a great time to ask questions of them if you have specific questions. Maybe you're thinking you might want to move into that position. So you want to learn a little more about it. But if anyone has any questions in that regard, please go ahead and either put it in the chat or raise your hand. But if you raise your hand, you have to give us a minute to find you because there's six, over 60 of us on the call right now. Anybody have any questions? You can't let all these guys off scot-free tonight. Make them earn their Zoom.
If no one's going to ask a question, then I'm going to ask a question of you guys.
There you go.
What can we do to help you enliven your clubs and make them more active right now? Don't all speak up at once.
I think we better unmute everybody. They're all.
I think that's the idea. Let's unmute everybody. Let's let's get some discussion going.
Liz is in the center tonight, so she's the Brady Bunch.
Everybody, okay, where is everybody?
Okay, so it's Grace again. I'll go ahead and unmute myself. I guess my question is to, on our service projects, to be more specific to the community needs. And I went to one of the meetings. I'm sorry, I cannot remember which meeting it was. But someone did mention trying to contact your city council member. And maybe they would have a more direct link. So I guess my question is, has anyone that's present tonight, have they done that? And what questions do you ask? And who do you really go to? Did you go to the mayor or did you go to your, I mean, what representative did you?
Mary Chris, or no, PETA's exec. They have a vice, do you have a vice mayor as a lion in their club? So is he a vice mayor?
I think he's there.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's that's one way, you know, make him in, make him a lion.
He is a lion.
Yes.
He's our president, club president.
So maybe you can help answer that question. Does it help to contact your your local politicians and and ask for what services needed?
Yeah, you can invite the mayor or the, you know, whoever is in charge of the services. Because last meeting, we had her and she was able to tell us what the the city needs. So I think that's the best way to go about it.
You can also invite people from the food bank, from your community foundation, from any other organization you have in your community that that provides service to your community. It's a great program for your club. And then just just ask, how is it that we can support you? Do you need volunteers? Can we partner on something? You know, the world is your oyster, particularly as it relates to your community and all the different agencies that are providing service.
Right, and I know that San Martin has a very good relationship with our supervisor. And, you know, he's given us some very direct feedback on areas that that could be, that could be improved. So, you know, you can just go straight to your county supervisors and to your elected officials to get to get some information.
This is Val from Almeden. And we have had, on more than one occasion, our city council represented for the Almeden area. And he is very, he's been seated in Lions and becoming a member. But he's too busy right now. So once his term is over, I think he may consider joining. But he's been very helpful to give us insight into what's really happening in the Almeden area with some specific problems. And then we have a, we have a person, happens to be a little fervor, but she's in charge of coordinating the speakers who come usually two or three times a month to our 7:00 AM meeting. And we don't have any trouble getting them to come. We're doing Zoom, obviously, now. But the other person who's come is the is the police area, area person, area, I forget who, what her title is. But she fills us in on what's happening in the crime in the area and and what we need to be aware of and what they're working on and suggestions they make. So we've had pretty good success with, like you say, getting getting people who are in the know in our community to come and talk to us about what they're doing and how we can help.
We we have another question in the chat from Candace. Candace, would you like to address the group about crowdsourcing?
Our zone is trying to put together a fundraiser for a recent fire victim. We're thinking about doing meals. Tammy Lyon actually came up with the suggestion at the start. And a lot of the rest of our zone leaders have really supported it. We have a date as early as the 12th or 13th at the moose, where we would be able to use that facility as a sort of pick-up, drop-off point. So we were just wondering if, especially since Gilroy just went through this a week and a half or so ago, if they have any advice or if others have any advice for things we need to think about, especially given COVID. That may be too specific. I don't know if that fits for the town hall.
You're talking about how they how they packaged the meals for the virtual sale that they had, the virtual?
Yeah, any sort of advice. Were there one or two things they really did right? One or two things that they would do differently?
Well, Bill, I think, is on the line, Bill Hart.
Candace, to address your, this is Stan, to address your question about about a way to do that. Can you hear me? All right. Okay, good. So we had a, there was a fundraiser that was started by a restaurant in town called Feed the Need. And 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 it got so big that he handed it off to the Chamber of Commerce. And then the end of it, our Lions Club came in. And what they were doing was funding, you know, a certain amount of restaurants and giving them the money so that they could prepare the meals and give them to the first responders and to the people that needed the, the people that needed it. And so at the end, KJ, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this. I think we we raised $5,000 or $10,000. And we also matched it from our own funds. And so and then those funds went to restaurants that we had close relationships with because they 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 helped us in the past. So it was, and and this was, and it helped, it helped the first responders. And it also helped the restaurants that need the business as well. So it was a, it was a win-win.
And it wasn't just, and Stan, nice, Lion Stan, follow up with that. He he alluded to the restaurants. And specifically, these restaurants were the ones that have supported us at our Gate Night event and our other events that we had service providers on site or provide for. So that's how we gave back to our own. And so it was very successful, yes. So that, the way it's been done many times on the Facebook, Pisa Apps, et cetera, we did the same thing through the Chamber. The idea was matching funds through our Lions, similar to what we're doing for our Gate Night event right now. You know, again, I think, you know, Lion Sue brought it up perfectly. You know, if you're not, if you can not go to an event and spend that money on LCIF, we're asking the same thing. If you spent $75 to attend our Gate Night event, can you donate that back to our club, which we now have a matching fund capability of another $10,000 that goes back into our community? So again, those are some ideas. I know a lot of clubs have their own ideas and there are a lot of them are real good ones. And I love the fact that people are still doing service. Lion Bob and all those are going over the the other side of the, into where the fire zone is in Watsonville. You know, kudos, we can't be more proud than all that service work there and at Jacob's. But I'll tell you, those are some easy ways. And I want to say easy because you still are asking people for money in this COVID situ environment. But, you know, people were saying, well, maybe I'll put a couple of bucks back in my pocket for once, you know, not go to a Lions event. Yay, anyway. But, you know, that, I know I'll get fined for that. But anyway. The idea, so those ideas there to match funds, coming up those formulas, those are good ways that your clubs can stay active and contribute back to your community.
Candace, George Stewart with Willow Glen. Don't reinvent the wheel. Call Dean Raymond if you've got a directory. He's in last year's directory. Call Dean, ask him how he did it. Get his corn. If you need corn on the cob, get that corn.
And save your cobs and have a contest. I need to, you know, measure the corn cobs.
Thank you.
Okay, Liz, where are you?
Right here. So does anybody have something going on in their club that they want to talk about? Something that's coming up? Something that you just finished that you're proud of and want to share the news?
Energy Pioneer Lions Club, we raised the fund, but, yeah. For the COVID-19 pandemic, we raised lots of money. But somehow, I wasn't involved in this. So all the money, we bought the mask and we bought the sanitizer and we handed to people who ever needed it. I, we should have done that with that money. We should have gave to LCIF and let them handle it instead of ourselves handling it differently. So I guess from now on, since I'm involved in it, we gave a very small portion of money to LCIF. So I guess from now on, if there's any fundraising, if we do it, then I guess we're going to have to share the money to LCIF. So.
Lotus, it's all good. It's all good, Lotus. It doesn't matter whether you gave it through LCIF or you give it through your club. It's all service and it's all good and we love it.
When I saw the, yeah, but when I saw the report, San Jose Pioneer Lions Club is all empty, all blank. I was very embarrassed.
Well, you can, you can have a goal and and Lion Sue will be happy to help you reach that goal.
Yeah, that's my goal, to get more involved. But every time we do Zoom meetings and stuff like that, I'm the type of person, rather go out there and meet a person and talk to person, in person, not Zooming. I'm not used to this. So. Just let me know.
Good for you, good for you. So I do see that Art has mentioned the register of voters. Is your club working with the elections?
Yes, you know, you know, in the past, we've had fundraising events where we pour beer at the Chamber of Commerce festivals or we would have a pancake breakfast. And obviously, we cannot do those things anymore, at least for for this year. So we, we look for other avenues of fundraising and also doing a good deed for the elections because they do need to have help. And so we have something like 10 or so members that's going to volunteer for multiple days, four days at least, you know, from the end of October to November 3rd. And, you know, we get at least $65 per person per shift. So that that could add up to, you know, several thousand dollars. So I I think it's not too late to to get people to to donate and donate their time and help. I have the contact information. You know, the gentleman's name is Mike Fong. And I can give you the phone number if you like.
Can you put it in the chat? Can you type it into the chat? And then everybody can see it.
You're so smart.
Thank you. No, I'm just watching everybody else do it. That'd be great, thank you. Bobby D.
To piggyback on Art, Sunnyvale Host does the RV register of voters. And I'm sorry to tell you, Art, but right now, we have 20-plus people that will be participating in regards to that. It is an easy way for a club to earn extra monies for them. And you have a choice of either putting it in your admin or in your charitable fund. It can go either or. So.
Agarate del pollo.
By me?
A la puerta.
Nora. Nora, we're in English, Nora. I'm sorry.
Go on mute. So Dave, I think you want to talk about the Vista Center fundraiser?
Yeah, hi. Can everyone see me?
Hi Dave.
Hi, Liz. Yeah. So on September 12th, Vista Center is hosting a fundraiser from 4:00 to 6:00 PM on Zoom and there will be a live performance by a band called Sweet Haya and West San Jose Campbell Lions sponsored the band. And we're hoping to raise $6,000. So if you go to vistacenterevents.org, donate anything, a dollar, $5, 25, a thousand, whatever you can afford. Right now, we've been working diligently on getting this to go and we have contacted a lot of different Lions Clubs and we're just not getting a lot of donations and I'm kind of concerned about that. So I would really, really love if everyone could just help out. It's something that we should be doing as Lions, right? It's Vista Center for the Blind and Visually Impaired.
Yeah, by the way, Vista used to be the Lions Blind Center on North Bascom Avenue.
Correct. So Dave, can you put that information in the chat?
I can right now, sure.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Sure.
Did publicize it on Facebook, so it is out there and I put it in my last email that I sent out.
Thank you, Dave.
Lion, Liz, we, one of the other things we have upcoming is, and Lion KJ mentioned our date night. Our date night is for our CASSI program, which is a mental health program for the high school and middle schools. And we typically raise about $20,000 a year, approximately $20,000 a year for that, which we give the, the schools. If I posted, I put it on the, on the chat. If you go to our website and, and there's a donate button there and there's a nice picture of our, of our donation to the high school, $9,000 check last year that went to the high school. There's a nice picture on the website, so any, any donations would be appreciated. Normally, you know, it's $25 a person and it, and if you, if you've come in the past and can't come, but if you've never come, any donation will be, will be accepted.
Thank you, Stan, and I appreciate you putting the website in your chat information as well. And so to those of you clubs that maybe you're not doing something right now, but you really wish you were, if any of this sounds interesting to you, reach out to the people that are involved in it and ask if you can help, learn what they're doing. You know, everything we do is easily replicated in any community, so take advantage of the knowledge base that we have here that's available and ask the questions. Thank you, Dave, for that, I appreciate it. And Art, thank you, have Mike Fong and the phone numbers for the registrar of voters. And this is Santa Clara County, correct?
Correct, Santa Clara County.
Perfect, thank you, thank you. And I know Monterey County is the same. We're, we're also volunteering for the elections committee. What else is going on?
Student speaker topic for 2021 is distance and online learning, pros and cons. There will be a student speaker contest. There's contingency in case it's not in person. It'll be like it was this last year, but it is ongoing. That's from Melinda.
Melinda, thank you. So we're going to be wrapping up soon. I'd like to ask anyone, are there any topics, any, anything that you would like to see happen in this town hall meeting? Because we'd like to continue to have them, but we want to make sure that they're meaningful and a good use of your time. So does anyone have any suggestions about a presentation, a topic of discussion, anything that you would like to see us cover in the next town hall meeting?
I actually just came up, this is Lion Stan, Lion Liz, the, the, in my LCI, when you're, when you're putting in your activities, there's an option to invite other clubs. And I tried to use it today. I don't think anybody got anything though, but I did invite 1,000 people.
I did the same thing and I didn't know if anybody was getting the emails. It supposedly goes out to everybody in the whole district, but I don't know how that works.
Don't ever, don't ever do that again.
My question to everybody is how, you know, there's a lot of people here and do we have a lot of online meetings? Are you meeting by Zoom? How are you doing it? And please invite me and invite our, you know, leaders to attend your meetings because I got to start making some visitations soon, you know? I'm not, I'm not going anywhere and I'm tired of being home, so please invite me and hopefully we'll see you in person soon. But yeah, you know, there's no reason why we can't continue as best we can, given the circumstances and help each other out, especially with fundraising service activities. I try to put on Facebook as much as I can what other people are doing to share so you can get some ideas.
Governor, this is Josie.
Renee, you have your hand up, Renee?
Josie was just going to say something. Yeah, well, we are all, with this pandemic, we're all tired of staying home. So what we're going to do, I wanted to resume our meeting, our useful meeting on Dennis on the second Monday of his, per month, you know, I mean, it's month. And some of the, some of our members are saying something, I'm like, hey, you know, we are all tucked up in the house and we cannot even go out, so let's go out and it's a reason to eat out. So it's a reason to eat out, but Dennis went, but unfortunately Dennis' restaurant is always busy, so when I, every time I call them, I don't receive any, they don't pick up the phone. So what I was advised that we would just go there half an hour early to just get our table so we could have our meeting there. Because, you know, like, like what I said, my other members and officers wanted to see each other too. We haven't seen each other for seven months.
Well, a lot of restaurants are having outdoor dining, you know? We had dinner at Denny's on Berryessa Road, I think it was. And if you like sitting outside on hot asphalt under a tent, gasoline cars going by, then, you know, that's one.
We just have to go there early, very early to get our own table, so that's probably what it is. The, the plan that we would do. I would, I like, I like the Zoom meeting because it's one way, like, I could do more visitation that way too. We're going to resume that. Hopefully we're going to resume that because like what I said, everybody wants to see each other now or next month.
What I want to know is how are you, how are your, your older members, I don't want to say older, but you know, less technologically savvy people, how are they handling that?
Well, right now, there's one member that we're willing to drive them, you know, to bring them to the, to their zone. So, actually, two or three of them decided that we have to do that instead of Zoom, you know? But well, I don't know how to do that and blah, blah, blah. And I said, okay, let's go ahead and try to do it.
Make a suggestion. What I try to tell people is, you know, there's a phone number on that Zoom invitation and you can just call in and hear everybody's voices at least.
Linda, we have a question from Renee, San Martin's president.
Okay, Renee, hello.
Unmute yourself, Renee. Unmute, unmute.
That was a fabulous day.
There we go. Can you hear me now? Linda, I just wanted to extend an invitation to you that you are more than welcome to join us, our meet at any of our meetings.
Thank you.
First and, first and third Thursdays at 4 o'clock. You are, you are more than welcome to attend any of our meetings.
By Zoom?
On Zoom, we're on Zoom right now. Hopefully, we're in a county that we managed to get off the governor's watch list. Hopefully, I think they said it's going to be around September 8th. We might be able to resume our person-to-person meetings rather than Zoom. But whether it be that or Zoom, I'd like to extend the invitation to you to attend any of our meetings. You're more than welcome.
If you all want to lift a paintbrush and help out with Jacob's Heart, that was the most beautiful facility for childhood cancer family, you know.
It's coming out really nice, really, I have to commend Richard and, and Robert from San Martin and Richard from our club, they have busted buns literally on that place. It's been pretty darn awesome.
Thank you.
Pretty awesome.
I see one, one thing in the chat for San Jose Caixan Unity Lions. What do you want to share?
Hello.
Hi Helen.
Everyone, I know we're a new club and I just want to share a fellow lion, Lion Gaisofo, that has been helping the frontliners in the Philippines. Yes, I sent some pictures to our lion governor and I'm very impressed that five months now she's really helping the frontliners, feeding the nurses, the doctors and, you know, the military, the one that's helping the COVID victims. And she's doing this by herself.
Oh, wow.
Caixan Unity Lions Club. And we're very thankful for her generosity and her service to the community. And also, we're also gearing up for the, for the registrar of voters. We have five teams now that will start October 31st to November 3rd. And that will be also a fundraising for, for our club. And we donated from, from the members of Caixan, $500 to the wildfire victim for the California Alliance Foundation. So at least even in this very hard times, I would like to thank our fellow Caixan Lions for their service to our community. Thank you.
You are a new club, but mighty, mighty active.
Thank you. Linda, we have Leslie that had a question. She had her hand up.
Yeah, hi. Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Okay, hi, everybody. I'm Leslie from Cupertino D'Anza and our members have been, you know, sitting around twiddling their thumbs like everybody else, trying to figure out service projects. So on Saturday, September 19th at 10:00 AM, we're going to be hosting a Zoom Project Linus Blanket hearing event.
Go.
So we're, we've bought our, our fleece, it's ready to be distributed to our members and community members. And we've got a Girl Scout troop involved and an elementary school involved. They're going to be picking up their, their fleece from our home, our front porch, non-contact like COVID-19 asks. And on that Saturday, we're going to do, I'm going to do a tutorial on how to make a Project Linus blanket.
Fantastic.
And if anybody wants to, to join us, you're more than welcome. Just, you know, let us know at Cupertino D'Anza.
That's, can I, can I introduce Lion Fred? He wanted to introduce us to the newest club, Capitola Coast Club. Where are you, Fred?
I'm right here.
There, hello.
Thank you for the introduction.
Fred.
Hi, how are you? I am representing Capitola Coast Lions Club. We are a joined together club associated with the Common Roots Farm located in Santa Cruz. It's a 501(c)(3). Currently have 19 members and we're, we're full of energy and ready to go, so looking forward, looking forward to serving.
Very good. Night, welcome, welcome to 4C6.
Yeah, I'm a transplant from 4C3, so you'll have to be kind of me.
We're kind.
Linda, just as a reminder, we still have a video that we'd like to show with past international Ms. Gutron.
Okay. Liz, do you have anything more to, to add to this?
No, I'm good. I'll hand it off to you, Linda. You can introduce the video.
Okay, I'll let Thelma introduce the video because it was sent to her, I believe. Thelma, are you here?
Yeah.
Okay, so this was specifically for our district, correct?
Yes. So our intern, intern, immediate past international president, Gutron Inbadotier, sent us a video message, it's eight minutes, and to specially congratulate District 4C6. Go ahead, BDG Allen, do you have the?
Yes, I do. Give me one second.
BDG.
Greetings, Lions of District 4C6. It's wonderful to join you today as we settle into our new Lion Year. I'm grateful for the technology that has brought us together and that keeps us connected as we learn to gather in new ways. I hope you, your club, friends and family are doing well and keeping safe. I also want to thank past district governor, Thelma Batillo, for inviting me to join you today. Just over a year ago, I visited your wonderful state. Along the way, I had the great pleasure of meeting some of you, saw firsthand the tremendous fruits of the service to which you dedicate your time and talents. And I connected with beneficiaries of your hands and your hearts, the essence of all Lions service. Thank you for sharing your inspiring stories with me. Seeing the faces of the children, families and communities you helped and continue to serve, often with grant funding from Lions Clubs International Foundation, or LCF, makes me so very proud to cheer our foundation and to serve alongside you. Today, I want to congratulate all the newly seated district cabinet members. You play a vital role in Lions, the greatest service organization in the world. Stand proudly and confidently as you guide members of your district through the Lion Year. When each of us became a Lion, we joined a network of volunteers, working together to make a difference. We take action to make our communities better. We lead by example. We build relationships to build stronger futures for our children and healthier lives for all. Most importantly, we improve the world through kindness. Joining the Lions in your district are 1.4 million other humanitarians, Lions serving together to make a lasting impact and change lives. As we all know too well, Lion Year 2019 to 2020 did not end as we had anticipated, but that didn't take away from your success. The year proved what we already knew, that Lions are resilient and there for our communities during times of great need. I'm proud of you and pleased to celebrate with you just a few of your accomplishments.
Hi, everyone, I'm Nihal from San Jose's Rockcel Funk Band.
You named 50 new Melvin Jones Fellows.
And I wanted to tell you about a very cool Zoom event.
One, progressive MGF, and one, three, progressive MGF. Congratulations. You welcome two newly chartered clubs, Coast Lions Club and Lynbrook High School Leo Club, bringing your district total to 46 Lions Clubs and 100, no, and 16 Leo Clubs. PDG Batillo earned the 2018, 2019 District Excellence Award for accomplishments in membership, service, organizational excellence and marketing and communication. Well deserved. Well deserved. Congrats to Milpitas Executive Lions Club President, Nellie Cabul Slay, who was awarded a Club Excellence Patch and Pin. I also want to acknowledge and thank District LCF Coordinator, past District Governor Scott Leslie, for continued support and dedication to our foundation. Past County Chair Roger Powell, we celebrate your tremendous success and leadership in California. You and PDG Leslie are both vital to MD4's impact and contribution to Campaign 100. Thank you. As we look toward the next Lion Year, I hope you will take time to share with your new members and seasoned members more about Lions Clubs International Foundation. Once again, our foundation, and the foundation that supports so much of our service and expands our impact. To date, August 2020, LCF has awarded nearly 7.3 million dollars in grants for projects in California related to disaster relief, diabetes, improving your communities, and so much more. Lions, now and for months to come, when we speak about LCF, you're also speaking of Campaign 100. LCF empowering service, the greatest opportunity in Lions history to ensure our service continues for generations to come. Knowing this, I thank you for working even harder to achieve your Campaign 100 fundraising goal and adding to the nearly 120,000 dollars already raised. No doubt, COVID-19 has complicated our ability to fundraise. Yet, the reality remains the same. Our world, including the United States, is in need. Every gift makes a difference. As we all sit before our screens today, instead of beside our fellow Lions, we are reminded that life has settled into a new normal, one that is taking some, getting used to, and challenging our patience as much as our creativity. Thank you for tapping into your lion spirit and remaining confident and resilient in the face of our global pandemic. Our world has changed dramatically, making the need for Lions like you and me greater than ever. Thank you for making such a profound difference in your district. Though the beneficiaries of your service may never know of your kindness, I do. And so I will reiterate how very proud I am to serve with you as a Lion, as a humanitarian. Congratulations again, District Cabinet members. I offer my best wishes and thank you for undertaking these very important roles. Until your paths cross again, I wish you good health and much happiness, thank you.
And I'd like to thank Susuks, who's been working for the last three months, about three years, as our representative to LCF. And she has always worked tirelessly for the district and for our clubs. So I'd like to personally thank her for all her hard work and also for being our special guest speaker tonight. Lion Liz?
I'm going to just make one last little statement, and that is that if anybody would like to have one of these yellow shirts with this wonderful patch that says, "Ride the wave of change," because we're all riding this wave. And hopefully, we're not going to get buried by it, but we're, we're surviving. And you can order it from Lion Suzie, along with a directory and a pin, and we will get those to you as soon as we possibly can. So just contact Lion Suzie DeYounger, Cabinet Secretary.
Linda, I have another two-minute video to show real quickly.
Okay, this is going to be, is this the one that is going to make everybody just get up and want to dance?
I don't know, it's from Vista Center, so I have not seen it, so.
Yep, this is cool.
Hi, everyone, I'm Nihal from San Jose's Roxel Funk Band, Sweet Haya. And I wanted to tell you about a very cool Zoom event that the band will be taking part in on Saturday, September 12th at 4:00 p.m. This show and benefit is organized by Vista Center for the Blind and Visually Impaired and sponsored by the West San Jose Campbell's Lions Club, and Sweet Haya is very excited to be a part of it. Today, with your help, we'll be raising money for the new back-to-school program created by Vista Center in an effort to help kids with vision loss live their best lives. Vista Center provides awesome teachers of the visually impaired that work in school districts to help kids have academic success. When COVID-19 hit, the kids couldn't be in school in the same way. So Vista Center is responding by getting the specialized equipment to students' homes and teaching over Zoom. Making that happen costs a lot of money, and that's why we're hoping that you can be a part of this fundraiser effort to make sure our kids have the best shot, because they are awesome and they can do anything. A big thank you to West San Jose Campbell Lions for sponsoring this event and to Vista Center for this incredible initiative. Thank you so much, and we look forward to seeing you on Zoom on September 12th, 2020, at 4:00 p.m. Be sure to RSVP by September 11th. Please register to attend the concert and donate today by visiting www.vistacentarevents.org. Make sure to click on the "Back to School Concert" icon on that page.
Thank you, Alan. Bob Stewart, can you just say a few words, or maybe Dave Kaplow can talk about how other clubs can get involved in this and use your own branding to get the, the link out to your contacts so we get as many people attending this as possible?
Oh, okay, hi. Just send me a message, an email to davekapismpeterlow@gmail.com, and I'd be happy to make a custom flyer for your club. And you can invite everyone you want or know. We also have links to that video and to the fundraiser page itself. Thank you so much for playing.
You're welcome. All right, I think we're about done with this town hall meeting. Is there any other comments, anybody, burning questions, Suzie?
I just want to say, on an emotional note, it is so nice to see the faces of all these people that I care about. And I'm especially happy to see Jean Westcott, I haven't seen her in five months.
Yay, Jean.
Thank you, everybody, for being here and having such beautiful faces that warm my heart. Thank you.
Okay, you can unmute, unmute yourself and just say what you want to say, then we'll leave. Okay, everybody's so silent, all right.
I like the way you present Joe, he keeps coming in and out.
He's just back and forth.
Hey, guys, we're going to make this a wrap, but anybody wants to stay on and chat, go ahead. But I know you all have important lives. Thank you so much for joining us again at a town hall meeting. We always learn from you, and I hope you got something out of the meeting, too. Take care.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone, thank you.
Bye.
Bye, John Boy.
Bye, 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 bye. Bye, John Boy.
So. Okay.
You're at sixty-eight plus, Linda.
I know, that's, that's quite amazing. It is, you know, we, what we're trying to do with this, and we still haven't quite accomplished it, but, you know, I don't know if we can ever.
We'll sidebar that conversation later, Linda. Okay, good night.
Good night.
Good night.